Six P M. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Granite Falls School Board. And. Oh, wait, please stand for the. All right. I'm glad we're here. We're speaking for Atlantic Northwest.
Great, thank you. Uh, we are the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillagomish Tribe of Indians. The Stillagomish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial, and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillagomish people have continued to practice, practice the traditional ways of their ancestors of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillagomish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors who believe that everything has a spirit and that they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to take this moment to excuse Director Carey and Director Goffman from this evening's meeting.
A little second.
Motion has been made, second or third?
Alright.
At tonight's meeting, we have Director Danny, Director Will Do, and myself, Director Kincaid, and our superintendent, Director Danny Ethan. Um, moving on to item number three A. Um, this is educational, education support professionals week. And we have a little statement. So from March tenth to the fourteenth of twenty twenty five, it's Education Support Professionals Week, which was formerly called Classified Week. Um, the tradition started in nineteen seventy five by P S E to recognize the contributions of education support professionals in the public school system. And it is a statewide celebration to recognize E S Ps for the difference they make in our schools and universities. So we'd like to thank them at this time. Moving on to item number three B, board comments and reports. We'll start with W I A A.
Uh, no meaningful updates.
Do you have any board comments?
Um. Nothing, nothing really prepared. Uh, I would, I would just say, um. I've made this call, you know, several times across other board meetings. I feel like I'll just, you know, continue to make it again, right? Um. I don't want any of us, and I'll, and we'll speak on partially behalf of the board as well, too. Like, our emails are readily available on the website and everything. Um. We really do try to make an effort to be available, to be, um, you know, at, at events and everything to discuss anything that's on top of mind for a new parent or educators, anything along those lines. Um, if you can't find us at one of those events, email us. Um, I am happy to meet with coffee if there's anything that's on your mind, um, anything along those lines. So I just really want to make sure that that is open and clear. Um. I can't really email everybody in the community, but I can receive any email of people that are interested in talking with me. So I am more than welcome or willing to, to meet up. I'll even treat you for coffee. Although we don't have the virus anymore, so. Maybe that could buzz in. So.
Director Danny, you have any board comments?
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I want to speak to, um, the, uh, news of the day, which is, uh, on our state level, uh, concerns about state budget and, and financing of schools. And then on federal level, there's, uh, a lot of news that came out in the last two days about, um, our federal financing of schools in our area. And there's a lot of, of, um, speculation about how funding is going to, um, affect our school district. And I just want to assure the staff, the, the, the families of our students, that the board and our administration are working diligently to make sure that our funding is stable. Um, I started on the board about two years ago. We were, we'd started down a, a rabbit hole of funding crises. And over the last two years, working with the staff and the board, um, we have stabilized that. We appear to continue. There are going to be hard choices, um, hard decisions to be made over the next couple of years as, uh, our funding models change. Um, and, 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 you know, everything that we do, we're going to make some hard decisions as a, as a group, um, the five members of the board. And, and I hope that you guys can trust that we're doing everything we can for the best of our students and our staff and the families that were supporting us. So if, if, you know, hold on for a tough ride, but we're going to get through it.
Thank you. Um, I just kind of wanted to repeat what Peter said, that we are here or on email, contact us, because I know there's a lot, so there's a lot of chatter that goes around, especially on Facebook, and we never hear any of it. No one ever emails us. We would like to know what's going on. Um, so just reach out. We're, we come from all different backgrounds. We all have different strengths and, and things like that. Um, we're all parents. That's kind of the big thing. We're all parents. We all get it. We all understand. So reach out to us and let us know, you know, what kind of concerns you have, or even if you just want to chit chat. So, yeah. All right. Um, moving on to item number four A, um, it's the Monte Cristo Elementary student presentation.
So every morning when we do the pledge of allegiance, right after that, we do the Monte Cristo pledge, and Megan was so kind to write it out for us. Thank you, Megan. Um, and so my kids are excited to be here. Thank you for having us here. You guys ready? At Monte Cristo, we.
Your hotel. That's the kicker. What kind of place? Beach, mountains, desert? That would be awesome. Right, Director Andy, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, uh, with my background. Tell me one thing that you guys look forward to every day that helps keep the school safe.
Everything but recess.
Everything but recess?
Really? Interesting.
Okay.
He just likes to learn.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, third graders. Thank you, Mrs. Benison. Thank you, families for.
Thank you.
To come here.
See them. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
Yeah, nurse.
Welcome, Board of Directors, Cabinet Leagues, and Community Members. At Monte Cristo Elementary, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year continues to be a year of collaboration. We welcomed a handful of staff members, and we have eight third-grade classrooms. We continue to enroll more students, and our fourth-grade classrooms are almost reaching thirty students. Due to the new students and staff members, we are cognizant about the extra effort that needs to occur in order for everyone to feel a sense of belonging, safety, and trust. We continue to focus on increasing student achievement, especially with a new adopted reading curriculum amplified. We have a team of committed school leaders, adults, and students, and a passionate staff to make this work possible. Our leadership and equity team, professional learning communities, positive behavioral interventions and supports team, attendance team, school-wide interventions, office team, the M C E Associated Student Body, and M C E Boosters Club, community members, and families contributed to the changes made in, made within these walls. The Monte Cristo teams are focused on social emotional learning, bringing clarity to instruction and tightening up our behavior management systems. Collaboration is the key for our school system to function well. Currently at Monte Cristo Elementary, we have forty-nine point fifty-one percent female students enrolled versus fifty point forty-nine percent male students. Our student raises are two or more raises at five point forty-four percent, Hispanic at fourteen point seventy-six percent, white at seventy-five percent, and African American one point thirty-six percent, American Indian point thirty-nine percent, and Asian one point seven five percent. Our school's program and characteristics consist of six point seventy, seventy-nine percent of our students who are bilingual. Thirty-six point five percent of our students are in the pre-reduced subgroup, and students who are homeless are five point eight percent. Our students with disabilities are nineteen point zero-two percent. Four point twenty-seven percent are in the title program, and twenty point thirty-eight percent are in the LAPP Learning Assistance Program. In addition to point seventy-seven percent in the gifted program. For the last two years, the Smarter Balance Assessment data results in reading and math is hovering around thirty percent for third and fourth grade. Fifth grade's data is around twenty percent. There is a decline in the F P A data for most of our grade levels. The Science, WACUS, Washington Comprehensive Assessment of Science data is hovering around the high forty percentile. The WACUS data results increased slightly during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. These I Ready typical growth projections show the approximate percentage of students who would place in each state test level based on different amounts of growth achieved. These projections will help give teachers early insight into students' potential success on state assessments, which can be critical in getting the right resources and instruction to the right students as early as possible. Analyzing the beginning of the year I Ready diagnostic results, the top graph projects a thirty-two percent proficiency rate in reading, and the bottom graph projects a twenty-four percent proficiency rate for third-grade students in math. For reading, we will focus on phonics, vocabulary words, comprehension literature, and comprehension information of text. For math, our goal is to push our Level Two learners, also known as our Bubble Kids, to Level Three. We will focus on number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. This graph projects the S B A Smarter Balance Assessment proficiency rate in reading. Third grade at twenty-nine percent, fourth grade at twenty-nine percent, and fifth grade thirty-seven percent. This already graph project the S B A Smarter Balance Assessment proficiency rate in math. Third grade at thirty-three percent, fourth grade eighteen percent, and fifth grade nineteen percent. For our first goal in our school improvement plan, the percentage of third, fourth, and fifth grade students achieving annual typical growth will improve fifty-seven percent to seventy percent in E L A, and the percentage of students achieving stretch growth from twenty-four percent to forty percent in the E L A as measured by I Ready by June twenty twenty-five. Our school, school goal is to increase the previous year's outcomes through collaborative efforts with the leadership and equity team. We expect to see three to five percent increase with the outcomes by the end of the school year. Students will increase in literacy learning and activities from the new Amplified Literacy Curriculum. Students are in small literacy groups. They are reflecting on their goals and learning with their teachers, also known as data chats. For our goal number two in the school improvement plan, the percentage of third, fourth, and fifth grade students achieving annual typical growth will improve thirty-seven percent to sixty percent in mathematics, and the percentage of students achieving stretch growth from thirteen to twenty-three percent in mathematics is measured by I Ready by June twenty twenty-five. Similar to goal number one, our school goal is to increase the previous year's outcomes through collaborative efforts with the leadership and equity team. We expect to see three to five percent increase with the outcomes by the end of the school year. Students are engaged in math activities from I Ready Math, small math groups, and math goal setting and data checks. For goal number three, during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, using data and collaboratively thinking, collaborative thinking with our staff, students, and families, Monte Cristo Elementary will have an attendance rate of eighty percent of students attending at least ninety percent of the time. Our school goal for attendance is to increase the attendance rate to a higher rate than last year's rate of seventy-two point seven percent with the collaboration of our teacher, staff, and the leadership and equity team. Students are accountable for tracking their attendance, checking in with adults, morning meetings, and leadership opportunities. Actually, our hero, Mrs. Megan Rice, is here tonight. She is the lead of our attendance efforts. Let's give her a round of applause. She's in the blue. And not only that, but we've had three teachers in the past few days have perfect attendance. Every single student was here in those three classrooms. Our parents are involved in the school improvement planning process, the leadership and equity team meetings, M C E Booster Club meetings, parent survey, and during the parent-teacher conference. Students are also encouraged to participate in the A F V Student Council meetings, the school-wide student surveys, and the M C E Student Council meetings. They have many opportunities to be involved in our school. That is the end of my presentation. At this time, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, yeah, I'm curious. So with, let's see if I can look back up. I'm just looking down here. Uh, with the math data for this year, so it looks like, you know, there's declining in third and fifth. Fourth is increasing indeed. Is there anything that you can point to for that? Is there anything different happening in the fourth grade setting than others?
I believe that with our teachers, we're all doing small groups, and the more we do small groups with students, that's where the targeted interventions are. So more targeted intervention, small groups, will change the outcome. So some teachers are doing more of that. And also, fourth grade is a smaller team. Third grade has eight teachers. And so it takes more efforts to do the planning and to collaborate when the team is so large. But we do have a third-grade teacher here, Mrs. Benison, and she can speak to what you asked.
As soon as you asked the question, I thought of, I, I think a piece of that also goes to that we don't have a smaller math course going out anymore. Um, and so I think that's why we're dropping.
The LAPP.
Yeah, the LAPP. Um, I know that the kids that are in title and they get pulled out for reading, uh, I've seen huge gains this year. I mean, they are doing so well. And, but those are the same kids that made up with math, and they're not getting pulled out of the small group anymore. And I think that has something to do with our percentages.
Okay. Cause yeah, that was kind of my, my follow-up on here is, so we see that was it twenty-four percent of students, I'm assuming this is student body-wide, are considered proficient within math. How are we seeing those numbers compared to previous? Cause I know this year math is now, however you want to quantify it, like as a special. It is, it is a, like, we see numbers and we can, we can compare them relatively to other years, but what does that actually mean? Cause I see this and I see that, you know, across the school, you know, there's two hundred and eight students in Level One, which make up forty-three percent of our population. Right?
But that's just projection. That's, that's what they're expecting it's going to be in spring, yes? That's not the current results?
That's math winter twenty twenty-five. Oh, so that's, yeah, so that's, that's most recent.
Oh.
And so like, and again, it's like, if, you know, to your point, it's gonna sound like if, if we're not, if we're expecting them to test on things that they haven't learned yet, like, I mean, wouldn't the actual measure be to test on what they have learned and should be expected to learn at this point? That's also the thing, like, I'm, I'll stop again on my I Ready rant yet again. But I don't understand the whole, we're labeling them as one year behind when that's actually where they're supposed to be. And like, again, I just, I'm trying to figure out again, cause I, I don't, I'd imagine if I'm Miss Winn or Miss Benison, and I'm looking at these, I'm kind of racking my brain trying to figure out, like, what do I do with these numbers? Like, how do they actually help me, help my students? So.
Can I ask you a question too? Kind of on the same line, along the same lines as that. So I'm familiar with I Ready as a parent, um, but not really the backend on the teacher's point of view. My school does maps, so I'm familiar with like the backend of that. So you as a teacher, when you get their results in I Ready, do they, does it break it down by like, so if they're doing math, like, they've got this amount in, I don't know, adding and subtracting in this amount in geometry. So you can see where they're struggling at and.
They have so much details to it. They, they will break everything down. They give you ideas of how you can help them. They have a, a section where, and I did it for conferences, printed it out for parents, how the parents can help at home in these certain areas.
Yeah.
Um. But like I said before, when there's four areas of math and we've only taught two, that's, that's an issue. I do want to provide some very though, it is a dynamic test.
So it might give a third grader, uh, an end of third grade problem type for math. And if they don't perform accurately on that, it will resign down. So the diagnostic is meant to find students where they are performing. It will give them problem types that are outside their range, and then it will center down on problem types that are within their range. So it's not like an entire test of, you know, variables for third graders. It gives them one or two, and it, it kind of is a little bit smart, but.
Yeah, cause I mean, I think ultimately, like if, yes. I'm just, I'm sitting here seeing, you know, the results and, but like if we're to go and individually survey each teacher, for instance, and they say, I'm getting everything that I need out of I Ready, then I'll shut up. But if it's, I know that there's this other thing up here, and the majority of teachers are saying, I would much rather get this sort of information out of this. It will really help me with my students here going forward. Then I would, I would want to go, right, I'll take the lead, or I'll, I'll, I'll take my marching orders from the people that are actually doing it. I just don't want to continue to go down the path of like, cause it, it, I completely agree, right? Like, more holistic, like collaborative work and all that stuff. And I'm not here to get into like the tactical details and whatnot, but at the end of the day, like, what does that mean? Like, what are, what are we doing? You know, we, we talked about it, I think, at the last board meeting, like, you know, a, a million people is a statistic, one person is a tragedy, you know, sort of thing, like, each student here is their own individual, and like, how do we move that individual forward, right? Like, these people that, these students that are in Level Two that are, like, how many of them are right there for Level Three? Or like, how, how do we move that needle the best? And again, I think that's just like a thought experiment for, you know, administration and for the teachers to be like, do I really have the tools that I need to evaluate where I should take my next step?
And Jerry, Will Do, just, just to follow up on the twenty-four percent. That's twenty-four percent assessed in January. It does not take into account all of the teaching and all of the growth that will happen between when they took the screener and when they will actually take the S B A. So there's a little disclaimer that you can't see because it's on the website, not on the presentation. That if everything were to stop right here and we were to deliver the S B A, whatever day that we delivered that, Sean, like, you know, that would be the score, but it does not count, account for the four months of instruction
Yeah.
between then and May. So it's just a projection based on January's screen.
And, nothing is the be all and end all. Right. I know that Paige feels this way, I feel this way. It is a compula, compilation of, of so many things that's in the classroom, right? Um, and so I Ready is a good diagnostic tool. It gives you a lot of information about your kiddo that you may or may not have learned. It allows them to make groupings. It allow, it gives you strategies. It gives, I mean, when used in its entirety, it, it does. And we want instruction to be in other ways as well, right? We would never just plug a kid in and go, oh, you know, just go do I Ready, go do I Ready. Like, of course not, right? Because many different ways. And then the special that we have, the math specials, I mean, that's what we heard at Mountain Way, right? How excited kids were about math. And that was, you know, I think directly related to what's happening in the classroom and directly related to what's happening in the, in the specials. Um, so, and then we hear today, and, and whatever they're working on. I mean, their favorite thing is fractions. Oh, you're working on fractions, right? Like, it's, you know, it's kind of that. So, but it is, it's, it's an indicator of, and it's, and all of those things, but we need to, we need to use it with fidelity. We need to use the data that it gives, and we also need to be, I mean, we have professional educators who
Right.
who do things and pivot all day long to, to meet the needs of kids.
Have there questions for?
Now, just, as I look at the numbers this year and compare it to the two previous years, we, we're, we're assessing at this point, same time each year, and, um, this point doesn't seem to be getting any better. And so projecting that, that by the end of the year, we should be here, right? Five, seven, eight, ten percent above. And yet we're still, we're, we're behind. And it's concerning. You know, the way outside of my league as far as why it's happening, but when we see those present, presentations and, and it starts off with, we're behind this year, when we could put, as much emphasis as possible on trying to get these numbers ahead. Um, you know, the, it, it feels, and I think the, the teachers are probably, you know, as frustrated as I get when I look at these numbers. Um, we have to figure out how to get these kids pushed ahead. You know, it's, it's for each one individually. So it, as a board member, a little, little down right now. Looking at these numbers.
I appreciate that. And I, you know, I said at Mountain Way, every inspection minute is precious. And, um, you know, I think about the waivers that we've had that are five less days of students. And um, you know, I think about the waivers that we've had that are five less days of students in front of us, right? And the minutes that we have with kids, it. Every every minute matters and that's bell to bell. That's a hundred and eighty days and that's every minute of every single day. Um, you know, working towards, you know, those outcomes.
Sure.
Um, it's it's important to me as an educator. Yeah, that's it. That is, that is the critical piece, right?
Yeah. I'm just taking all of it.
Okay, I know.
I I am, just because I pulled it. Last year's and I can't tell if this is math or. This is everything. But yeah, it's hard. Yeah, I guess I guess I'd have to take this off.
It can be a little apples to oranges too between um between grade levels. I mean, you can watch cohorts, but the fourth grade tested, like if you're looking at SBA. Like this year, like the fourth grade test is different than the third grade test. And so even with the same cohort, it's it's still apples to oranges. So we're cautious. But you do see trends with with groups.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll just have to take back through and compare. Does I I think, because Bill brings up a valid point that like if you look at winter. Because this this everything from this winter should apply to last winter as well. Like, oh, we still haven't done everything, but you know, it's gonna. It's like, so if we're twenty four percent this year, but last year we're at forty three percent, like. What's happening? Right, like, there's, and again, I just go back into if. If we feel confident in the tools that we have in place, then great. But then like. Do we wanna see that not going from forty three to twenty four? We wanna see that going from forty three to forty six to fifty two to, you know, so on and so forth. So um. That won't be the dead horse.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to uh item number four C, business report presented by Marshall Creek.
I'm not presenting tonight, I just gonna have some information, but if you guys have questions, um. I will call up that I did change the projection to five point one percent fund balance. Based on we got our transportation allocation and it came out on the high side of uh two point one three million instead of the. Sixteen, one point six million forecast.
Okay.
So um, we're still waiting for, yeah, we're still waiting for um safety net to be finalized. And um and community impact. So those two numbers, once we get those firmed up, we'll have a really good number, but I I'm. I'm more confident than ever that we'll make our five percent this year. Is this still a conservative? It's still conservative. Thank you.
I I do wanna give um an amazing shout out to the whole team who has worked on safety net. I know safety net intimately. And I'm really glad it's not me this year doing it for my system. Um, so thank you, Rachel and Marshall and the whole team that supports our student services. It's. It is cumbersome, doesn't even do it justice as to how much work it is. So just access money that we should have been given in the first place. So. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Amazing work.
You don't get to remember like one point six million dollars, what we're looking like, we're gonna ask just for just for the high need safety net. Without having great records, great detail and spending a lot of time. Working on the submission. I mean, it's it's. Hundreds of hours.
Okay. Moving on to item number four D, superintendent report.
All right, and thank you, Dan, for putting that up. Dan's gonna um help me with this a little bit because we're gonna get to some tech stuff and there's gonna be some things that. I may not be the expert on. All right, here we go. See? All right, we will start with the safety and security updates. Every every board meeting, we talk a little bit about safety and security and and sometimes communications. So. I asked Dan to put a blurb together and this is his blurb. It will be here, but one of the things that when I first came into the system that I was concerned about was um. Um, our stu- many of our students have have access, of course, through our Chromebooks and. We wanna have some filtering and monitoring tools that help us um intervene when we need to intervene. And so Dan is um has has put forth this piloting program and it's already proven um incredibly helpful. So of course, we, everybody should be safe and secure on the internet and um a lot of times it is something that you're trying to use and you'll get. Um, something that says, nope, you can't go to the site. But the the additional pieces that are in some of the the new filters that we have. Um, alert us if a student is, you know, accessing information that could prove to be harmful or um cause self harm or harm to someone else. Um, I'm gonna let Dan walk us through just a smidge of this, but we're piloting it right now. Um, and then the great thing is is that the way he has worked it is he's worked with some vendors to have this be cost neutral. Which is always something that um a superintendent loves to hear. So Dan.
Yeah, right, oh. So we've been using one product for. Uh eleven years now and it's kind of hard to break out of an ecosystem. But I wanted to change how we manage Chromebooks. And. The product we have is a suite of apps and one of the apps we've been using for managing the Chromebook fleet, but I wanna. Transition to one that other districts are using has much more robust. So. That would break me out of the suite and then, you know, it opened up the bot process and then talking with data about some other issues that all came together. Let's. Look at another ecosystem. So live wise is the one. I mentioned at a a trade show. Marysville. Yeah, they have the same same features as what we've been using, but. Uh, this one seems to catch a lot more. Uh, we've had a lot of things that teachers call like, hey, the kids, I can't see what they're doing. Uh, they found workarounds and. And this one's been. You know, I got both layers currently working, so they get past the one. But then they hit this one, so. And and we're using the monitoring feature. Which alerts you to, you know, someone that's. If he's talking about violence or uh self harm, those sorts of issues and. And it gives a, apparently goes to me and then I I delegate it out. But once we if we, you know, go with this, it'll, I'll have it. Talk to buildings individually and get me out of the picture because I don't wanna be the, I don't wanna miss something too. And the the nice thing is is uh there's a human element to it. The product we were using. Has this feature, which we haven't been using, but they have all these tiers and they have. A human at this place, look at what's come up and say, oh, this is. You know, this is obviously not. For a self harm thing or whatever. Uh, it kind of stops there, but. They determine, yeah, let's send this on, they send it back to us. I like having that human. Otherwise, we get so many false positives that you kind of. You quit checking them because there's so many things coming your way. So. That's another nice part. Um. And yet. Budget neutral. And they have, they seem to have more innovations. They have this new thing, an image blurring feature where. If kids could still look. Like, you know, like, can't look at pornography, but you know, like. Bras or swimsuits and stuff, you'll still blur the images. And that's kind of a neat thing and uh. And there's also, uh, they're coming up with a video blurring technology. Just helps catch some of this stuff before it gets to the kids. And ultimately, the goal is like Dana said, every instructional minute is precious and. And I I hate having technology derail learning or become a distraction. So hopefully these tools will help. Help us get a better grasp on on that. That's a. Kind of it in a nutshell, but this. Allows me to pursue this other product to help manage Chromebooks. Uh with vandalism and responsibility physically. And. And I'll use a different product for that. But this one was a. A big, that's a big change. So if we go with it, we're piloting it, but very happy with this so far. I gotta get some teachers trying to. Classroom management piece now where you have little thumbnails of. What your kids are doing on the Chromebooks in the room. Uh, I get them like that. It's very similar to what we've been using for that part. Any questions?
Yeah, the, so the the tricky part with um. With anything tech nowadays is because like I was. My my thought process behind school as well too is like preparing kids for the quote unquote real world as well. Um, one other thing I've noticed with like a lot of Chromebook filtering that schools use. Is either, yes, there are workarounds or. It is. Too prohibitive.
Right.
To actually like. And again, I said like a real world situation, like it, for instance, like. I'm helping, you know. My daughter, her son with math. And I'll be, I'll jump on and say, oh, I'm just not understanding it and I just don't feel like either the virtual textbook or the actual textbook is explaining it that well. And I'm just like. Well, especially in like more complex math. You're not just like, I'm not just gonna Google the answer, but I am gonna Google like, what is the thought process behind this? And you'll Google it and there will be a link that will explain, you know. You know, differential equations or something like that and you click on it and it'll be blocked.
Yeah.
Because it's not part of like the ordained. And so I'm just curious, like, I I know we'd rather be. More like, so long as the kids can access their textbooks and extremely safe content, like that's better than. The opposite. Uh, but I'm just, I'm just curious, what's your experience been with this? Like, does it still allow for like? Exploring into like, how how good is it at like, oh, well, because this one doesn't have like an EDU at the end of it. We just won't let you access it yourself.
Hack off that whole.
Right.
Yeah, um, it lets you do whatever you want with the product. You could and and cover with the boilerplate. Uh, setup from it, you know, it was blocking all kinds of things. Teachers kept calling me, hey, what's this? You know, and so, you know, and you know, you could. You can massage it to get it to where it works for us and and that's almost an ongoing thing is something. And it's the hardest part is like educational games. I get teachers, can you please turn that off? It's such a distraction and then. I turn it on, hey, what happened to this? I can let my kids use it, you know, so finding that balance. You can get. Granular with permission levels if you want. And actually grant that to the teacher themselves. They can say, okay, you can go to this, they can throw that whatever site that may be coming up blocked. They could throw it into a, you know, it's like, you know, just type it in, boom, and the kids can do it for the hour that they're with the teacher or, you know, all day. Uh, and then. Uh, and then, you know, you can all uh. Pass it on to us. Okay, I really like this resource. It has a block, so. It 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 was, see, if you come up with a class lesson. And then, you know, doesn't work because it's blocked, you can override that as long as it's not, you know. There's categories that you can't override.
Is it possible for you to give uh certain like role uh role level access to like. Teachers to be able to allow or disallow?
I believe you can.
Okay, so like maybe eventually get to that.
Yeah, especially if they don't wait three days for me to get back to them.
Well, and and also believing like. My personal opinion is your job should not be complete gatekeeper.
Right.
So we're gonna hope our educators could, you know, decide like, yes, this is an okay site.
Yeah.
Our kids should be able to access that. Um, and then also this is kind of like in in the weeds detail is, is so for like line wise monitoring. Um, like so tracking this stuff, does it track it to like the IP of the? Of the laptop itself or is it associated with like the student ID?
Yeah, it goes with the student ID.
Okay.
It might have some IP. Uh, address. With that, I've done that, I haven't looked at that, but.
Well, and I I would I would prefer like, because I just think then too of. You know, we we talk about. Just. The responsibility that school districts hold with, you know, students accessing things and this, that and the other and just. As we have, you know, monitoring, like, is there an auditable trail? For us to like, and if it's if it's following the student ID, then it doesn't matter if Chromebook. Chromebook gets broken or year after year they switch it, switch onto new owners, I'm saying, you're saying. Um, so again, I go to like. It could be something where it's like, hey, this is a recurring issue of that student like circumventing things like maybe they're fantastic. And they're able to like. Completely skirt some of these, some of these systems. Um. But yeah, just just thank you.
Yeah, I know, yeah, the products that we all end all, there's always. There's always a hole and it's better when they patch.
Yeah.
All their abilities, but yeah, and that's part of classroom management if a kid's spending an hour. Trying to, you know.
Yeah.
It might be a classroom management issue, not necessarily a tech issue.
Yeah.
You know, with your time, you're.
Yeah.
Sitting there all day trying to find proxies or.
Yeah.
So it's a. But, yeah, and it has reporting, it set up all kinds of reporting tools and there's a, there's a parent element too that you can use. Families, the. Pause access on here. From look at home. They control that from their phone. If you turn it on.
I would say we've already had um a few, I a few times where we've been able to intervene in a very helpful way and make um. Really significant contact with family of that or a child that is, that means it's not.
Okay.
So there's, I won't give any specificity, but it's been on a number of occasions and and so really grateful that we've started to then. Right now, it's already paid some dividends. So that's really good. Thank you, Mr. Scholar. All right, teaching and learning. Oh. Um, Emily.
Great, uh, we are just in the middle of our second benchmark of student wellness screener. That's from the Center for Educational Effectiveness. Uh, congratulations to Crossroads who got it completed actually yesterday. Well done. Um, and we are working through that as a district and um I think I'm looking at a couple of my teacher colleagues in the room and it's gonna be a little smoother this time. So.
I'll be like, I took care of my business.
I'd like to take a moment to thank our best teacher mentors for all their work. There's a lot of hard work this year. We're part of the ESD one eighty nine consortium and that's been a little bit. Tough and so we have opportunities abound, right, directors? Um, so we're gonna be taking that back for the for the coming year, but our mentors have been working really, really well. We managed, they don't know this yet, we managed to release some, some of the ESD eight, ESD one eighty nine funding to provide some possible. Subrelease for some. Some visiting of classrooms, imagine that. So. Um, they are doing a lot of really hard work with our our new teachers who are working really hard as well on instructional coaching and. And just teaching them about the systems of support that are here. Um, uh, in Granite. So we're, I'm very grateful to them. Uh, just met with our technology team uh yesterday. And we are conducting a broad systems review. Uh, speaking of technology, um. On our software and applications, we have some redundancies in the system and we have some things that we're paying for and so we're. You know, we're looking for every dollar and um so we're, it's a, it's a mixed group of teachers and staff and so we're really excited for that work. We're looking uh at some of those products and some of those ways that those products are duplicated across our system and we're paying for both. Uh, and finally, uh, met with our six through twelve ELA curriculum team yesterday. Um, they are in the room and doing the work on that H M H Intel Lit pilot. Um, and I'm super proud of that work. Um. So we're conducting that regular in-person feedback loop and they're giving the good, the bad and the ugly. Uh, which is really, really good. And then we'll be meeting again, uh, actually quite soon to do. An assessment on a very specific rubric of that. Uh, pilot information and then they will be coming to you in May with a. Recommendation, yea or nay. If there is a recommendation, they'll be coming to you. And if there's not a recommendation, then we'll move forward with. Uh, next steps for us, but it's very encouraging to have. Six through twelve ELA teachers in the same room talking about the English experience for our students and we're really looking forward to having. Um, as John Thompson would say, we have not had an English curriculum for secondary in thirty one years. So opportunities to have our Granite Falls Tigers with a comprehensive. English literature, language arts experience. So. That's my report.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, just a little update on our student voice. Of course, that is of huge value to to all the educators in the room. Um. Tomorrow, our entire cabinet is meeting and we get to have um a couple of school board directors there, only two, so we don't have to have a forum. But thank you to uh Director Lada and Director Dane for volunteering to be there. I wanted to give you a quick heads up. There's gonna be a icebreaker. That our students are gonna answer and then they have a load of questions um that they have for you, so. It's gonna be great. They will also be popping out to do some videos. Um, they are students, we have our students grades three through twelve. As you know, we have about fifty four students that I meet with. Almost once a month and um they will also be doing some videos um for principal recruitment. We um are going to have a new principal at Monica Stone Elementary. We're going to have a new principal at Granite Falls High School and so um. Our students, we're gonna, what do you wanna see in a principal? What works for you? And they'll do some things and that'll be part of our recruitment process. Um, and then we're meeting on April seventeenth as well, um, ongoing. Um, and then we're meeting on April seventeenth as well. Um, ongoing student action work that we do at Tiger Cabinet. And then probably a little bit more video taking um, for recruiting Tiger Cabinet for next year. And then lastly, on May twenty-ninth, and you all are invited to that as well, we have um. Representative Lowe, uh, Representative Es, Eslick and Senator Wagner are all going to be here. Um, I met with them a, maybe a month or so ago with the city of Granite Falls and just some legislative action and. I, I can't say enough about how supportive Representative Lowe has been um, in some of the initiatives that the district's working on. So we, we are really grateful to have them in front of our students and. Connecting our kids with um, their legislators that do the hard work in Olympia for us. Upcoming. Upcoming district and community events. This is not a comprehensive list, but our spring sports have kicked off at Granite Falls High School. Let's, maybe we could get some nicer weather. We could really um, maybe get some games and things in. Um, final week of winter sports. I was at the, there's a small G there, should be large. Um, but I was at the middle school girls basketball game last night, always a good time. And quite frankly, the snacks that they have in the concession stand at the middle school are top notch. You would love it, Paige. Um, Paige is my go-to for snacks, so it. Primo. Um, the empty bowls event is rescheduled and it is this Saturday. And if. Um, you want to go to the Community Coalition um, website, there's details there for that. Our next school board meeting is on March twenty-sixth. At Granite Falls High School in the Performing Arts Center. It is a su, a success in Ed Night and Bridge Builder Awards. And our nominations are still open for Bridge Builders. So if you would like to nominate someone who makes um, a real difference in. In building relationships with our students, because we know that adult student relationships are what starts, um, you know. All these positive outcomes that we're looking for, for our kiddos. Um, we have a local coffee shop that I'll name um, on the twenty-sixth that has offered to. Uh, a nice little gift card for all of our winners from here on out, which is just incredibly thoughtful. So. Um, shout out to them next, next time we meet. But again, that is at Granite Falls High School. There's a band concert this Thursday night, um, high school band concert. We are in the middle of our CTE Wassa review that we have talked about a number of times. Um. This, the staff from Wassa will be onsite in district on Friday. And they will be interviewing staff and um, we've already um, given them lots of documents and different things. We. Um, CTE is a very complex, it's career technical education, it's complex. The funding model is complex and the requirements are incredibly complex. I cannot say enough about Candace Ford and Josh Ben. Benson, yes, we just call him J V D. So I'm just like, he has a last name. Um, they have done such a fantastic job um, leading that work and that CTE review. And I just, I thank them um dearly. And they are, they'll be guiding the um, the people that are coming out from Wassa. And then lastly, um, last week I sent some surveys for, um, actually Paris sent out surveys that I gave to her. And for our staff at Granite Falls High School, our, our families and our students to give input on their new building leadership. Um. You know, what they're looking for and those kind of things. And we will use that feedback, which is now, I don't know how many it's up to, but we had maybe eighty-five students have already responded, which is. Amazing. Again, student voice, but we'll use that data to drive um, interview questions and screening applicants and all of those things. Because this is the feedback from our community. And then Monte Cristo will send um, some surveys, a little bit different than the Granite Falls High School ones, out next week. And. Thank you, Principal Lynn, for all that you have done uh, for Monte Cristo. And um, but she's still here, she's still here till the end of the year. So. Um, we will continue to do this work and um, get people in those seats to read our ballots. And I believe that that is it.
Well, any questions for Dana?
Empty bowls is fantastic. Not gonna, not gonna give away my secret, but I've got some great artwork there at the, the auction, auction over the years.
Yeah, I saw that in there last year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the soup is really good, too.
Okay, moving on to um, item number five A, items from the floor. I don't believe we have enough. Okay, um, six A unfinished business, there is none. Seven A new business, there is none. That moves us to the consent agenda. Um, are there any additions that aren't on the? No, okay. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay. Um, since there's no discussion. Well, since that passes with unanimous consent. Um, and that means that it is. Six fifty-five, ooh, good job, guys. Six fifty-five, that adjourns our meeting of this.